Okay, before you call roll, I just say obviously Mayor Flynn is not here this evening. He had a situation with the family that arose, so he left after the public safety building ribbon cutting this morning so he could go with his travel with his wife. So myself being the mayor pro tem, I'll preside over the meeting this evening, okay? So Wanda, if you'll do roll call, please.
Right. Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
And Mayor of Chautauqua.
You did.
Mayor Flynn test.
Okay, so first order of business tonight will be citizen input session. Probably everyone is familiar, but we limit comments to three minutes. And when the three minutes or everybody gets through speaking, we allow for council input, and that is not a discussion period. It's just if a council member may have something to say in reply to what a citizen talked about, they're allowed to do so at that time. So the first person we have on citizen input is Jame Fescura. Did I say that right?
No.
You're gonna pass?
No, I was saying it's right. You were saying it right, I said no with that today.
Okay, okay. Could you approach the microphone up front, please? How do you pronounce it?
Frescura.
Frescura.
It's press.
Press?
Cure.
Frescura, okay. All right, James.
Am I good?
You are.
I was gonna speak tonight again on behalf of the proposal I presented last month, but I'm gonna pass it this go around on discussing it. But one of my issue is on that proposal is, I believe, something needs to be done about the code enforcement because they are enforcing codes at will. I have received a warning letter and it was attempted a citation. The code enforcement officer blatantly admitted that he came into the neighborhood to try to write me that citation, but ignored the same violation just a few, probably 100 yards from me. And this happened multiple times. I believe if the city's gonna have these codes or ordinances in place, code enforcement officers need to do it fairly and justly. It's to a point now that I can almost make it a lawsuit as far as prejudice and probably to a point of racism. So I just think something needs to be done about it, especially on that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Tom Richards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tom Richards, and I've lived at 63 Dogwood Drive for 14 years. At the March 27th Bella Vista City Council meeting, funding and a contract to repair Dogwood Drive at a cost of a quarter million dollars was approved. On behalf of the approximate 70 households in the lower Dogwood Drive area, I'm presenting comments and providing a summary spreadsheet of support for options to consider relative to these expensive repairs. When the final approval of the Country Club Villas subdivision was before the city council, that part of that development was professionally authored letter about anticipated future traffic on Dogwood Drive. In that letter, it was noted that there was little to zero traffic from the upper Dogwood area using lower Dogwood Drive. At that time, at least two present city councils and the mayor were on the council. Since that future anticipated traffic was accepted as accurate, that means the proposed repairs are complete waste of a quarter million dollars because there are very few vehicles from upper Dogwood areas using lower Dogwood. Option one, don't reopen Dogwood Drive, minimize the work, and return the funding to the city for better uses. Option number two, if Dogwood Drive repairs are being completed for fire and emergency access, minimize repairs and install two secured gates with Knox locks for appropriate limited access. If that previously approved future anticipated traffic is now thought to be significantly wrong, I and many others can personally attest that if Dogwood Drive is reopened, lower Dogwood Drive will change from a quiet residential street into a racetrack. If Dogwood Drive repairs are completed and reopened, here are additional safety improvements we expect. Active speed limit signage installed at both ends of lower Dogwood Drive. Two, snow removal friendly speed humps to be installed at both ends of Dogwood Drive. For clarity, speed pumps are engineered traffic control features while speed bumps are poorly designed lumps of asphalt placed across the street. At this point, I should also highlight that what I think was publicized statement from the street department that appears to rationalize repairs. This is quoted, "It's been a big topic for us with citizens between upper and lower sections, especially during winter weather. Firstly, while I personally spoke with everyone that assigned the summary sheet that I'm gonna provide for you, no one volunteered that they had been involved with this topic in any way. Secondly, no one that I talked with thought the long duration of non-winter weather creating Dogwood Drive racetrack and safety should be compromised by a short duration of winter weather as noted in the statement. I want to thank all the lower Dogwood residents for their interest in expressing their concerns." So if you don't mind, I'd like to approach and give you all the summary spreadsheet.
Could you maybe hand them to Wanda, and then she could pass them out after the meeting? Is that okay?
I have a dozen. How many did you want?
Well, we have, probably, that dozen's fine. Just pass them out. All right, thank you. Okay, Linda Lloyd.
Just a second, Linda.
Hi, I'm here tonight to speak about the sewer connect ordinance change. As a real estate broker, I've involved with lots of transactions of houses on the sewer connect list for both buyers and sellers. And I understand the change to the 100 feet because currently it says when it just goes in front of a house. My concern is the cost, the additional cost for the 100 feet. Right now, it costs buyers and sellers are negotiated between $7,000 and $10,000 to hook up to sewer every time a transaction is done. And I also understand there might be a proposal to change that 100 feet to 300 feet, which in many cases would require the person paying for that to maybe cross a road, dig into asphalt, repave something, and that would be an extraordinary extra cost. And there might be a proposal to change the 90-day connect to three years, which would be impossible to track. Also, if I'm selling a home on the sewer connect list and the people are getting a mortgage, in all cases, that mortgage company requires that connection to be done before the closing because the mortgage company doesn't want that outstanding expense to be out there somewhere for their mortgage borrower. So please take these things into consideration. I will say, I do understand we want to get more people connected, so I'm in favor of that, but the additional cost could be extra thousands of dollars, running it up to 12,000 or 15,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Okay, Tim Hall.
I'm here with the Bella Vista Fourth of July Parade that we hold down at Sugar Creek Shopping Center every year and have held it for the last 20-plus years. I sent you all this all an email on the April the 12th. Sounds like nobody else got it. I went ahead and printed them off and left them on your desk for you. The only person that did get it was the mayor. For some reason, I don't know why, didn't, may have passed the firewall to him, but not to you guys. So you have a copy of it. As far as, I'll just read this one part to you, "This year, the parade may not go forward without some help from the city. In the past, Mayor Christie has signed the liability waiver from Cooper Communities to allow the parade to be held on their property. Also, the event permit form that you guys have and fees have been waived by the city. Without these actions, my wife and I would be subject to personal financial liability in holding the parade. We would have to, according to the public event permit, we would be responsible for fire and police participation and pay their salaries during that time. So we can't, we can't do that. We would request the following. The Bella Vista Fourth of July Parade be designated a city function allowing the city to hold toward immunity from liability for the event and allow the mayor to sign the liability form from Cooper Communities and waive the event permit form cost for this I've talked to Mayor Christie, and he said that he had put in the budget for this year money for the parade as it being a public event. And talking with the current mayor, he seems that now there's nothing there and he's not willing to help at all. If we, if the mayor does not sign the liability form from Cooper because it's held on their property, so they've gotta cover themselves, we've looked at event insurance for that couple hours of the parade, and it would be about $1,000, which we don't have the money to do that. And if we don't get event insurance and the city does not sign for the liability, then we, as husband and wife, would be responsible for anything that happened to anybody, which we can't take that risk. And then also with the event permit, it calls for exactly like $30 an hour for police, and we have 10, 15 police officers that go down the route. With the fire departments, the same way. The fire, the chief can at least, it allows in there for the chief to waive the fees if possible. There's no, there's no opportunity for the police chief to waive the fees. So I would hope that you guys would consider this. Read over the, read over the email. I tried to get it to you before the, before your last working session. Apparently something happened. But if you guys can look over it and consider it, and if you have any questions at all, we'd be happy to address any concerns you have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Okay, this is where we set aside some time for council reply. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
Other than, you know, reference to Tim, I don't know why the city doesn't go ahead and get in there and help. The, I'm sure the advertising information department, having as little as he's gonna be looking for, could probably help out with that. And seeing we've done it all these years and all of a sudden now we're cutting them off, we would look like very bad if we did that for something as small as the amount as he's looking at and for all the support that gets every year. And we're not talking, city's got pretty much nothing out of it other than overtime a little bit here and there, so it's really a heck of a deal for the city.
I can shed some light on that. The city has never signed a liability waiver or intended by anybody related to the parade. I have no idea where this is coming from. Of course, and you know that Jim Parsons and the Patriots who have probably organized that parade for years.
Yeah.
And is this on?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. They organize that parade forever as a private function. The parade that goes through the shopping center there is on private property. It's not a public parade there. Any parade they, permit they have to have is when they started it out at Mercy and came down Mercy Way, and that portion is in the public right of way. In order to close that, then they have to get a city parade permit, which is typical in every city. So I don't know what arrangement the Patriots had or Jim Parsons had with Cooper Organization in order to permit that, but I can tell you legally, we cannot take on someone's liability as a government. We can't do that. And there is no such thing as just designating as public because that's on private property. We can't just take that and say, you're gonna put a public function on it and control it like that. We don't have any authority to do that. So I don't know how it was organized in the past, and I'm sure that if Mr. Hall knew, he would love to be able to do it exactly the same way because it's worked in the past. I've not been a party to the mayor's conversation, I don't know, or the former mayor's conversation with it. I don't have any information on that. But this liability thing is something we can't do. And I don't know if the Patriot Group in the past got an insurance policy or if Cooper Communities was willing to allow them to do it because they have some sort of designated nonprofit status. I have no idea. But I don't think anyone's wanting to stop the Fourth of July Parade, but it's just, there are certain things we can't do, and that's one of them legally.
This year could be a circus with the construction. Take that. Coming across Mercy Bridge.
Okay. No, go ahead, Larry.
One thing I think, and Jason, you know more about this than I do, but do we not fund the fireworks at Fourth of July? The city largely funded?
Yes, we pay for those fireworks.
So it would not be unreasonable for us to support some costs for a parade, given other parameters?
It's a different thing. The city has an agreement where we're allowed to put those fireworks out there, and that's with the POA.
Right.
Because that's up on the dam, and we've had an arrangement with them for a number of years in order to house that. The POA invites people to come out and park and watch the fireworks. We pay for the fireworks display.
So we don't?
This is a whole different thing.
It's not, so it doesn't have to do with Cooper development because it's a POA property? So our relationship is POA?
Right, Cooper's not involved in that one. Cooper's not involved in the fireworks.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, you know, just, Tim, real quickly, I mean, I think we had some really valid public comments tonight, you know, all really kind of like specific, specific things. Tim, I don't know when you have to have an answer, you know, in order to follow through on the parade, but we've got some discussion that needs to take place and some sorting out that needs to be done, okay? Is like May, and this isn't a discussion, it can't be, but is May too late to do that? Okay, so we've got some time. We've got a work session coming up. We can figure that out. Linda, I hear your concern over going from 100 feet to 300 feet. That's could be a very extreme additional cost, so we'll have to sort through that one. Tom, Dogwood Drive is the first. I've heard any comments about that, so all of us are gonna have to take your document. We're gonna have to have conversations and have some time to digest it, you know, before we can kind of sort through all of that, okay? Okay, appreciate that. James, again, the parking, we'll just have to review, right? That's the first I've heard any comments about your concerns as far as like some situation you're facing. So all those, we're gonna have to take a step back. We're gonna have to gather some more information, okay? And we'll address them probably at the next city council work session. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? No one? All right. Action on the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes since the work session last Monday? Anybody have any comments, any additions or changes that need to be made? No?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve by Jim. I gotta need a second.
Second.
By Craig, a second. Okay, so roll call, Wanda.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Good.
Did you call me?
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, reports. I have a proclamation by Mayor Flynn, and I did not see this proclamation before I got here, but I am required to read it, and it is a proclamation over the Building Safety Month for May of 2023. So bear with me. I hope I can do this, do this justice. Proclamation, Building Safety Month, May 2023. Whereas, our Bella Vista, Arkansas, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire provision officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety, the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the build environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as snowstorms, tornadoes, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, it starts with you. The theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investments at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, the Doug Fowler Mayor pro tem in representing Mayor John Flynn of Bella Vista, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 is Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Signed respectfully, John D. Flynn. Okay? All right. We do not have our financial statements or any, on the agenda this month, I just wanted to recognize that because typically it is. Our next financial statements will be due out for March, March ending the first week in May, and that will, that will move forward the same thing. So the April statements will be due out the first week in June at center as we move forward, and that's due to when we receive our state tax receipts from Little Rock. So we discussed that during the city council work session Monday. Okay, having said that, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Larry and Jim with the second.
Mayor first.
Yes. Okay, so new business.
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Okay, it's First Order of Business and Ordnance Waiving the Requirements of Formal Competitive Bidding and Authorizing a Contract with Superior Automotive Group in the Total Amount of $74,570 for the purchase of two 2023 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the police department. Is there any, any conversation, any thing that council requested the chief?
It'll be approved.
All right.
That motion, that vote, suspend the rules.
Yep, we gotta suspend the rules and go to third and final if you wanna approve it.
Okay.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final?
So moved.
By Jerry, second. Craig, second. Wanda.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to third and final reading. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $74,570 for the purchase of two 2023 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the police department. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Larry, second by Jim. Roll call, vote.
Yes. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Okay, item beyond the agenda, amending. Section 28-1 Sewer Connections Required of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bella Vista to require a sanitary sewer connection when service becomes available with 100 feet of a house lot or adjoining lot and for other purposes. And I know, Jason, you were gonna kind of give an overview of this.
Okay. We talked about this at the work session. What this does is changes section 28-1 and changes the language in the current code, which says that owners of real estate located within the city are hereby required to discontinue the use of septic tanks and lateral lines on their property when sanitary sewer service becomes available on the street in front of the house and are hereby required to connect to said sanitary sewer. It says a little bit more. What this change does is it removes the front of a house requirement and replaces it with a requirement that says owners of real estate located within the city are hereby required to discontinue the use of septic tanks and lateral lines on their property, on-site septic systems, when sanitary sewer service becomes available within 100 feet of the lot containing their house or an adjoining lot under common ownership with the lot containing their house. So that's the only change that this makes, is the terminology in terms of the proximity for the connection. Now, as you know, that connection does not, is not automatic. Section 28-2, which is not implicated by this change, says that the requirement to connect applies only upon sale or transfer of ownership of the real estate. So that all remains in place. None of that would change. It does change the language of front of the house to the 100 foot of the lot or the adjoining lot under common ownership.
Okay, so we know this is first reading, right? So we don't really have to move, make a move on this disordance this evening. I know that Larry, he has an amendment he would like to make. I believe he's agreed to present that, I think, at our next work session in May. Okay, so it's first reading, unless anyone has anything they'd like to add additionally at this point. All right, okay.
Doug.
Yes.
Did we forget to, by reading the, or just by title only, the first?
No, we, we did that.
He did, he read the, this one he read already.
Everybody speak up so we can hear.
No, we did it.
The title was read before we discussed it.
Doug Fowler just read the, read the title before we talked.
Yeah.
So that was the first reading tonight.
Did we not, did we not fail to?
We did a motion and?
No, we did it.
Suspend the rules and?
By title only.
Yes, we did.
We did.
To read by title only, we did.
Yeah, that was done before we got to new business. You seconded that motion.
Or seconded.
You did.
Okay. Item C on the agenda, ordinance, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48097, county parcel number 16-21109-000 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any discussion, any conversation? I believe this is the property that has the sheds on it.
At Metfield.
At Metfield. Is that correct, Tom?
Cart barn, yeah.
Yeah.
Question.
The cart barn. Yeah, Jerry.
We've talked in the past about the actual address, the actual location of the property as from a street address standpoint. I mean, when most people look at this, they have no idea from a public standpoint where that's located unless they go through the entire package. And so, and we're, we are taking these to third and final reading, which means that the public does not have an opportunity to, to object or make any comment to these, about these rezonings.
Well, there was public notice on these, right? And there was opportunity for public comment already at the planning commission.
Public notice before planning commission.
Yeah.
The, the normal input would be planning commission on an appeal or something else they might speak to us.
The public hearing makes place at the planning commission meeting, and they conducted that. So you, I mean, people came up and spoke to you during your public comment period, but you don't have a separate public hearing.
Right. Yeah. So does anybody want to entertain a motion to move to third and final?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Yeah.
Suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Yeah. So that was Jim and Craig.
Craig.
Thank you.
Wanda, roll call.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, so move, yes, move to third and final reading, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48097, county parcel number 16-21109-000 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Need a motion to approve, if so desired. Craig, you make a motion.
Second.
Jim, second. Jim, second. Wanda, roll call, please.
Councilmember Snow?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item D on the agenda. Ordinance, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48171, county parcel number 16-03465-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And staff is requesting a third and final reading on this one. Does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss?
Got a question again. Why are we fast-tracking these? Why are we taking these to the third and final reading?
Probably because we've done all of them that way. This is like, what, 12 or 13 or 14?
That's what I'm asking, why?
Well, what we're doing is rectifying our zoning map to make the use, existing use compatible with the zoning districts that they have not been assigned to.
But why the rush? I mean, why?
There's no real reason to rush it, but there's no reason to delay it either. I don't think there's anything that the applicant has proposed or is proposing that would require an immediate decision, but there's no reason that for us to run it through three readings either.
Now, there really is no debate.
There was little debate at the council level or at the planning commission level. Some public input in some cases, but I think the concerns were misunderstanding of what the intent of the applicant was. I truly believe that after being at the planning commission meetings.
I'm sorry? The intent of the applicant?
To rezone is to bring them in line with the usage, bring the usage in line with the zoning code. Right now, they're not consistent with the zoning code because we have assigned arbitrarily when the city created the zoning map.
I understand.
We assigned P1, which is a conservancy district, to all POA property, I believe. Is that correct? And so, we should not have done that. We should have looked at the usage specific and then the zoning districts being created and assigned an appropriate district at the time we mapped it. We didn't do that for our convenience perhaps, but not for the benefit of the applicant. So, right, there's no reason that we would want to delay or go through three months, three readings, three months of time. There's no need for us, it's time on our agenda for one, and two, there's no reason to procrastinate with respect to the applicant to get the thing rezoned correctly.
Okay, I'm just going to, are you, you got more?
No, I understand, I understand all that, but it's been, this has gone on for, this has been in effect for how many years now? Again, why the rush? Why are we?
Because there's no rationale not to just go ahead and move forward and get it taken care of. So does anybody want to make a motion to go to third? Spin the rules and go to third and final?
So moved.
Second.
Larry, Jim. So we got our first and second. Wanda, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
And Snow?
No.
Okay, we're going to pass this, we're going to move to third and final. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48171, county parcel number 16-103465-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Craig?
Second.
Jim, second. Wanda?
Roll call vote. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, item G, item E. Ordinance, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48174, county parcel number 1603464-001, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any discussion?
Move to third and final.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's motion to suspend?
Spin the rules and move to third and final. Okay, so Larry and then Craig. Wanda?
Councilmember Snow?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Carried. Five to one.
Okay, now moving to the third and final. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48174, county parcel number 16-03464-001, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Craig?
Second.
Jim? Wanda?
Councilmember Snow?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to one.
Okay, the remainder of items on the agenda are all resolutions, so no more ordinances. Resolution, okay, item F, resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Gina Porter to the Bella Vista Arts Council for a three-year term ending April 22, 2026. Any discussion? Need a motion?
So moved.
Jim?
Second.
Craig, at the second. Wanda?
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
All right, okay, item G, resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Elizabeth Duncan to position five on the tree advisory board for a three-year term ending May 1, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Jim has a motion to approve. Craig has a second. Wanda?
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Snow?